And um, I am Mrs. Jones when I am not Karen and I really prefer to be Karen. Except for my students, in this case, I'm Dr. Jones. But um, yeah. Academic setting, call me by my academic title. Friend setting, call me by my first name. So um, anyway, it's a, it's a lovely thing to get to talk to people. I really enjoy that. I don't need to teach as much as I did, so I miss that. So this is a nice thing that the Lord does for me to let me teach after a man or a speaking sometimes. Alright, so um, that's great. Father, we are thankful, so thankful for your goodness to us. You show us goodness every day, even though we don't always recognize it. And I thank you that you have a heart that delights in your children and that you long for us to be with you and that you strengthen us and give us purpose in life and strength to accomplish that purpose. I thank you that you never leave us, that you never forsake us and that you um, are trying to make us more like your son and that is an effort that will not be thwarted even by our southerness. That you have promised that you will make us Christ-like and that that will be completed when we are with you. But until then, you are bringing us inch by inch closer to looking like your son. And you pray, you would help us now in this little bit of time, helping to be able to express what you've laid on my heart. That it would be some encouragement to these ladies in Jesus' name. Okay, so. The um, well, we all know this truth and I'm probably not going to tell you anything that's new to you tonight, but I hope the refresher course will help. So the Lord tells us very plainly that his ways are not our ways. And we get in really big trouble when we expect them to be our ways. Because we look at hardships and say, "Why is he doing that to us?" "I wouldn't do it that way." I know you wouldn't, but we're not always all-knowing and all-powerful either. Every so often, I think, I have a global, a global idea that what God must do as God to be able to... manipulate is the wrong word. Move pieces on the chessboard might be a little better. To, to bring everything to bear on every individual per- person with individual circumstances and individual needs and work it all together somehow, in a worldwide fashion, to bring about our good and his glory. Only God can do that. I mean, I can't keep my own life over, unless my life and a dog. Or a cat. A cat's easier. So, the Lord's ways are not our ways. And so one of the um, well, my husband has a sermon called, "God in the Rearview Mirror", and so I'm plagiarizing sort of. So, one of the benefits of getting older, I'm sure, you, I know most of you don't know, but you can get a glimpse, you know? You look back and you say, "Oh, now I get it. That's what he was after. That's how that works together. That, oh, I see now." You know, think about the disciples, you know? They didn't understand Christ was gonna rise from the dead. You know, and then what happens? He rises from the dead and they go, "Oh, oh, 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 I know, I know. Remember what he said? He said that. That's what he meant. See, remember he said that and this is what he meant and, and now look, oh, I get it." Yeah, but horrible things had to happen first, horrible to their way, I think, before they could put the pieces together. And even then, I'm sure John, the oldest living disciple, was putting pieces together till they died. So, one of the benefits of getting older is the ability to look back and see the way God has brought about his goodness in our lives, even when we didn't recognize it. Or even when we knew it, we knew it wasn't goodness. So, I'm gonna give you a little bit of my history and then I'll um, share with you how I've been able to, in my little bit of life, to see what the Lord has been doing. And um, maybe it will encourage you to take a look at your own life and go, "Right, yeah. Right, that's what he was doing." And then when things are hard now, you can go, "Okay, in a week, ten days, or two years, I'll be able to look back and say, 'Oh, right, right.'" So hang on, I'll hang on right now, because I got, I have what? I have this past experience. Got something, so yeah. So, my father um, died when I was five. He was a good bit older than my mother and um, he was on Guam when Guam fell to the Japanese on December tenth, nineteen forty-one. And all the Navy and Marine personnel were carted off to Japan in January to spend the rest of the war in the Japanese POW camp. So if you've read or seen Unbroken, that was my dad. So um, he didn't know my mother then, but the Lord knew that I needed to be born. The Lord wanted me to be born, so my father survived the Japanese war. And that has been a great comfort to me, to know that in spite of the other things, in spite of his death, that the Lord wanted me to be born. And I like to think sometimes, in a fanciful way, I am fanciful. That the Lord, you know, okay, so I'm getting off track here, but it's a point. Like, you know, we existed in the mind of God from eternity. You know, he says he's loved us from everlasting. We existed in the mind of God. He just had to wait for us to be born, right? So that we could accept him as Savior, live with him forever. So I like to think that the Lord is like, "Okay, wow, French Revolution, good. Gotta get through the French Revolution. Nineteen sixty-three's coming, Karen's gonna get born. Gotta get through the Fr- okay, now we gotta get through the, you know, World War I. Okay, we're getting closer, we're getting closer. Karen's gonna be born. Gotta get through World War II. Oh, gotta get her daddy through the POW camp. Oh, gotta get her mother through open-heart surgery and, and illness. And, oh, finally, Cynthia came. And she's born. And I know that she's going to accept me as Savior and she's gonna live with me forever and I can't wait, because what does the Bible say? Christ prays to the Father and says, "You know that I want them to be with me in heaven." But have a few things they need to do on earth first. But he longs for us to be with him. Just like we long, the darker the road gets, the more we long. The more trouble we have, the more we long. That's not a bad thing. So um, so I was born in Florida. My father died when I was five. There was just my mother and me and she was ill. She had rheumatoid, I'm sorry, rheumatic fever when she was a baby, uh, four or five. But she also had scarlet fever. She had one of them twice and I don't remember. But she had a damaged heart valve and there was no hope to fix it until they invented the heart-lung machine. So it was diagnosed when she was in nursing school, but there wasn't anything they could do about it. So in nineteen seventy-seven, she had her first open-heart surgery. And then in nineteen ninety, she had her second. So the Lord preserved her. She used to say that um, she never thought she'd live to be forty, because there was no heart lungs. But the Lord gave her eight years. So, my mother and I didn't really, you know that southern expression, "Gee-haw"? We didn't gee-haw well together. Do you know that phrase? Gee, okay, so if you're driving mules, because my grandmother did. You're driving mules and you say gee, they turn one way. And if you say haw, they turn the other way. And if you've got a pair of mules that won't gee-haw, they go the opposite way and you're not gonna get any clowning done that way. You're just gonna get a really annoyed farmer. So we did not gee-haw well together and it was her fault and it was my fault and, well, that's how it was. So um, I had a hard time understanding, I mean, hard time, like into my forties, trying to figure out why God let my daddy die. Because I used to wish my mother would remarry so there would be a referee in the house, but she didn't. There were just the two of us and it's really hard for the child to be right, even when the child is right. Like, who moved the milk? Mama, I just, I walked in the door from school last night at nine o'clock. I haven't even been in the kitchen. Well, I didn't move the milk, so who did? There's just no win in that kind of, yeah, logic. And I finally, eventually got smart enough to stop trying, you know? But um, but that was okay. That, I mean, in hindsight, I needed my mother to be my mother. So um, it dawned on me that my mother, my father, when he was dying, asked my mother to promise to take me to Sunday School. Yeah, he was born, raised at Methodist, act of the Methodism was good. My mother would've said she was saved in a Free Will Baptist church and so my mother was a woman of her word and if she promised something, then that was gonna happen. So she promised him, so she took me to Sunday School and dropped me off and picked me up. And sometimes I stayed for church and fell asleep on the back pew. But she took me to Sunday School like she had promised. And I can remember one day, listening to the Sunday School teacher, and I remember distinctly hearing her say, "If you would like to receive the Lord as your Savior, please raise your hand." While I stuck my hand up in the air and that is the last thing I remember. I don't remember praying. I don't remember, I, I don't remember anything else. So I spent a lot of years going, "Was I really saved? I don't remember that. I don't remember anything." There's no date in my Bible. There's no, how can you? And then it didn't help for my mother to say, "If you are a Christian, you wouldn't act like that." Well, you know? So, there was a little girl who was a next-door neighbor and she was in our house and Mama came down hall and said, "We need to go, Karen." And I remember saying, "We can't go yet, because I'm telling her how to be a Christian." And I have cloned to that. Why would a little, you know, eight-year-old girl want to tell another little girl how to be a Christian if she weren't a Christian? I mean, what did, well, it prompted me to, sounds like, okay. But the important thing is, in case you struggle with, "When did you get saved?" The important thing is, are you saved right now? That's the important thing. Right now, today, yes, I'm going to have to, and I hope you are too. So, it suddenly dawned on me that had my daddy not died, he wouldn't have asked my mother to promise to take me to Sunday School. Maybe he would've gone to Sunday School, maybe not. But when he was dying, he thought it was important enough to ask her to promise that. So it seems to me that the Lord took away my earthly father so that I would come to know my heavenly father. And in hindsight, that is a really good trade-off. That is a really good trade-off. So I'm grateful for a hard thing like that. So when I was in, finished my fifth grade year, my mother decided my little Christian school was not challenging me, you know? So there were people from Bob Jones in the Young People's group at church and she heard that BJ had an elementary school and so off we moved to Greenville for my sixth grade year. And I've been there ever since. Which is a good thing, okay? So um, that got me to Bob Jones University, which got me to finish my schooling, which got me to work on staff and faculty, which got me to make friends with my friend Mona, who became my mom, she was older than I, my mom, my best friend, my big sister, my favorite aunt, my traveling companion, everything my poor little heart needed. And I used to say to her when I was particularly annoying, "Why do you love me?" "You know, I would love you. Why do you love me?" "Because God gave you to me to love." You know, you can't argue with that either. So, my housemate and I, we went away to work on our advanced degrees and the Lord knew exactly what he meant by saying, "You need to go away by twos. Two are better than one, right?" Do you know that, right? Yep, we had to write a dissertation each. She would say she wrote in the kitchen, I wrote in the living room, couldn't see each other. "What are you doing, Karen? Getting ready to write? How long have you been getting ready to write?" Meanwhile, I'm playing jewel quest. "How long have you been getting ready to write?" "Ooh, a while." "Don't you need, don't you think you need to like, write?" "Um, yeah." Karen, okay, 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 fine. So, two are better than one. Besides that, I spent the first six months going, "What is rhetoric? What have I done? I'm getting a degree in rhetoric. I don't even know what that is. We're taking a class in the history of rhetoric and every single person we're reading defines it differently. And, "I know literature, what am I doing?" And she would say, "It's gonna be okay." "I don't think so. I don't think so." But it was alright. So we decided if we could each write a dissertation in a two-bedroom apartment and not kill each other and have our unsafe friends go, "Really? You guys are managing okay? We're still friends?" "Of course we're still friends." Then we could come back to school, because we were on leave of absence. We could come back to school, share a house, and cats. Because I said, "We're getting two cats, because I'm not sharing. You can have your cat. My cat will be okay." So we got a house and cats and life was great and um, for a while, and then she got cancer. And um, I took care of her and people would say to me, "Really? Really? Really? You've been to every single doctor? Is that why you're there?" "Of course I have. Isn't that what people do? She's my best friend and my roommate." "Well, a lot of roommates wouldn't do that." "I'm like, really? What kind of, I don't, this does not compute, you know, we're..." So, had I not had my ill, matter-of-fact, realistic nurse mother, who always looked at the situation as it was and just dealt with it, you know, "This is how it is. This is what you do. You deal with it. You don't wish it were somewhere other way and just..." I could never have taken care of my roommate, because she didn't want to die. And I'm not sure that she ever really, deep down, accepted the fact that she was going to die. So I was the one that heard the doctor saying, "Well, you know, it's come back and we can't beat it. The most we can do is try to control it." I heard him say that, but I don't think my friend, I don't think my friend ever heard him say that. And I would say things like, "While you feel good, why don't you write that other children's novel that you want to write?" And she would say, "You act like I'm not going to feel good." And I would say, "Well, you're not. You know, you're gonna be on chemo and that chemo probably won't work and they'll try another one and, and eventually, you're not, you're not gonna feel good. So why do you feel good? Why don't we do these things that you, I've always wanted to do? I, you, you talk and I'll type." Because she'd written one children's um, missionary story book that was really great and I knew that she had another one in her. So disappointed that she didn't take me up on my stenographer offer. But had I not had my mother, I could not have taken care of my friend. And that was the hardest and greatest privilege I've ever had, to take her. And so when she died, I spent a lot of time going, "Okay, help someone go to heaven, now what? What is there left to do in life? Why don't you help someone go to heaven? So my poor students did not get my best effort that first year. I tried, I tried. I didn't, you know, purposely neglect them. I spent a lot of time watching late-night TV, trying to digest the fact that, now what? So um, so through Mona's death and that year of not realizing how bad I, how bad off I was grieving, because I yelled at my other best friend and I was so horrified at yelling at her that I said, "I'm gonna have, I need some, I need, I..." So I found a counselor and I went to see her and she told me, the first thing she said, fill out all this paperwork. Okay, the second thing she said, after fill out all this paperwork, was, "Got up to leave the table and walk out the door after the first appointment" and she said, "You know, Karen, God delights in you." And I went, "No, no, he loves me. I know he loves me. Of course he loves me. He died for me, but he delights in me? I don't think so. You don't know me very well." So from that experience, she kept seeing me regardless of what she thought I meant. I learned that I needed to forgive my mother. And that was not easy, but it was the right thing to do. And the Lord helped me and that was like the hugest, hugest, biggest burden off my shoulders. I felt like, you know, a Christian at the cross, the big burden. And so I realized, um, I realized, I told all my students, "You know, here's what happened and the Lord, this is..." And I had some students who were like, "Oh, I can't forgive my mother." "Oh, but let me tell you, it's the best thing and you, let's talk about this." And I'm like, "The Lord will help you and it's a really important thing that you need to do, because it's ruining you. You're not hurting her, you're ruining you." So I learned that God delights in me and I learned that I needed to forgive. So along the way, Dr. Bob and I had had some interactions. I was the yearbook supervisor, faculty supervisor, advisor. And so I read, I, I had some things that I wrote that he needed to, that's another story. But anyway, so, and then when, and after Mother died, she loved the art gallery, so I wrote him a couple of letters asking about the art gallery and some donations that Mother wanted to make and, and so, you know, so by the way, my, when my mother died, Mona and, Mona was well while my mother was on hospice. But God was very good to me. I did not feel, for three months, I did not feel pulled between the two of them. And my mother was so sick that she didn't have the energy to have to have everything done her way. And we had a wonderful time. So the Lord let that end just beautifully, good memories and great kindness on this part. So um, after Mona died, uh, and, and Mother, our mothers died on the same day, twelve hours apart. Strange, okay? So anyway, so I got to be friends with, uh, Dr. Bob asked me to be on the art gallery board and I'm like, "I don't really know anything about art, but if you think I can help, sure." And through that, I got to be better friends with Mrs. Jones. I used to be Beneth's groupie, you know? Be like, "I'm family. I don't have to sit where the usher stays. I can just like slide in and Bible conference church behind them and when they get up to leave, she'll turn around and I can say, 'Hello, Mrs. Jones.'" So we got, and I, what?
Were they in the movies?
They were in films at school.
Because I, I saw IMDB, like, that they were in.
They were in, um, Cheffy. You might have seen them in Cheffy. Yeah, so.
They were in all of those films, weren't they?
Uh, let's see, they were in Flame in the Wind. He was not, he was not in Cheffy, but she was Mrs. Cheffy. I don't think, I don't know that they were in Red Brim's the Good Father.
I can't remember about that in IMDB.
So, Cheffy's pretty popular. But anyway, so um, so my love language is gift-giving and I wanted to show Mrs. Jones that I loved her and so I, but she, you know, people are, people don't like to accept, it's hard to accept presents. And she was gracious and kind, but I discovered that she loved cats, so my cat started giving her presents. And you just, you just can't give a cat's presents back. So Lucy gave her presents all the time, you know, she got, my, Lucy was black, so she got black slippers for Halloween and she got black socks for this and they were all from Lucy and she would write Lucy really nice thank-you notes and so we got to be, we got to be good friends. So we, um, so when she got cancer, I thought, okay. So when Mona died, I determined I wasn't going to waste anything I'd learned, because it cost too much. Too expensive, those lessons were just way too expensive. So I um, I said, um, Dr. Bob's secretary was my friend, like, we'd go over and go to supper. She would be quite ready and I'd say, "Is your boss in? Can I talk to him?" And since we were on the board together, I would say, "How, how are you doing? How are you doing with this wide life that has suddenly become three weeks long, you know, between treatments? It was a strange thing for our life to suddenly just be three weeks long. Have a treatment, get over it, feel great, have a treatment, get over it, feel great, you know?" And he would say, "Ah." And I'd say, "Well, you know, this helped me with Mona, maybe it will help you. I don't know, but here you go, free for the asking, or free for the not asking." And then um, then Beneth went on hospice and I had my hospice speech already, but God said, "You know, Karen, you don't need to get that." So Beneth was on hospice maybe twelve hours. She came home, oh, I think she came home Friday afternoon and went to heaven Saturday morning. So the Lord was really kind, really kind. And um, so then I would go by for supper with Benny and I would say, "How are you doing?" And he'd say, "Oh, it's all right, no, no, excuse me, hello, how you really doing?" "Well, having trouble. I don't know, I don't know how, I don't know what to do with it." "Well, this helped me with Mona, maybe it will help you." "I don't know, just help me, use some verses, use some, you know?" I sat down and I thought about this. And he'd say, "I'm trying to stay busy." And I would say, "You know, that's great, but at some point, you need to go home every night and you need to spend some time being quiet and, and digesting this huge change that's happened. Life will never be the same and you can't just stay busy and put off thinking about that. You need to, you just need to process." "Oh, well, I know, but it's so hard. Yes, I understand that, but..." That's my advice. So anyway, so I don't know, suddenly we started talking on the phone, a lot about grief and what it was like and, and how do you do it right? And I would say, "You know, I don't think there's any one right way. Now, there are some wrong ways. My aunt grieved her son completely wrongly and I said, 'Don't do it this way.' But I don't think there's any one right way. It's individual." And then, I don't know, something happened. I don't know, something happened. And then I spent a lot of time going, "No, no, you're imagining things. You are imagining things." "No, no, you're, no, you're just, stop it. You get in so much trouble when you imagine things, Karen." "I don't know, maybe, oh, Karen, okay, okay, okay." And so eventually, I learned that had Mona lived, I would never, ever have been open to getting married, because I would have felt loyal to her, you know, that she was my friend and she was older than I and who was gonna look after her when she got old. So the Lord took, and the Lord gave. And here I am today. Yep, here I am today. So I have a different ministry than classroom ministry and um, and so I'm learning lots of things, like there's a new focus to my life and that, and that, he had us read this book and I, I finally said, "Could you just, could we just like stop?" It was a book called, I can't remember, but the premise is, "What if marriage is meant to make you holy and not happy?" And I'm like, "This is so depressing, because I am so far from holy. Could we just not read this anymore?" So he's like, "Oh, oh, okay." And I'm like, "Just..." So we read it since then, you know, but at that time, it was like, I...
Was this under honeymoon?
No, 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 it was before. It was like, marriage counseling, marriage counseling for ourselves, because, you know, I mean, who's Dr. Bob gonna go, and we're not gonna be going anyway. So anyway, it's a long story, but so I have learned overall to look back in order to look forward. And I hope that there's something in your life that you can look back at and say, "I see now, even just one thing that the Lord was doing and the good that's come out of it and that's gonna build my faith today in the hard times about what's coming in the future." So, that was just the prayer. Here's the sermon, okay? So, who, and I know, I know, I know, honey, I'm gonna see that. Okay, so who are we? We are daughters of the King and that means something. We are daughters of the King and that means something. So, here's a string of verses now, I'm sorry, they're all mostly in the minor prophets and you can just write down the, I'll read them to you, you can just write down the references as opposed to flip, 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 where is Malachi, okay? So even though, I love this. Okay, so um, yeah, even though, Hosea eleven, seven through nine. Okay, so let me just see. Here's a book called, "Gentle and Lowly: The Heart of Christ for Sufferers and Sinners." Most of us fall into that category, one of the others of those categories. I am in both, okay? I think if you have trouble like me, I didn't have a dad, so I've had a hard trouble figuring out who God the Father is all my life. The, the parent who was father and mother was not a shining example of God the Father. So I, this has nestled in my heart and brought me a great deal of comfort. So there will be some in the bookstore. So, Hosea eleven, seven through nine. Hosea eleven, seven through nine. "My people are bent on turning away from me." Well, that does sum, sum up the Israelites, doesn't it? And me, most of the time. "And though they call out to the Most High, he shall not raise them up at all." And you and I are looking at the history of the Israelites and going, "Yeah, right." "How can I give you a vote of freedom? How can I hand you over, O Israel? How can I make you like Adma? How can I treat you like Zerewem? My heart recoils within me. My compassion grows warm and tender. I will not execute my burning anger. I will not again destroy Ephraim, for I am God and not a man. The Holy One in your midst, and I will not come in wrath." Do they deserve wrath? Bent, bent, not an accidental oops, but like again and again and again, bent. And here is God saying, "Huh." And then he pities them, great pity, and says, "I can't turn my back on you. You are my children." Re- how's it, there you are. You are my children. How can I do that? My heart recoils within me, my compassion. So it's like the worst, the more we sin, the more Christ's heart and compassion comes toward us. I used to say to my students, "I am so glad that the Lord remembers that we're dust." You know, we're not mud. Mud at least holds together. Dust, you just go, huh, and it's like gone. The Lord knows what we're made of and we're his children. So our sin brings out his great compassion for us. He hates our sin, but he loves us and he pities us for being trapped in it. And how many of us, don't we expect this to say, "For I am God and not a man, the Holy One in your midst, and therefore I will come in wrath?" And it doesn't say therefore. It says, "And I will not come in wrath." So even though we are bent, he will not come in wrath. Then Micah seven, eighteen and nineteen says, "Who is a God like you, pardoning iniquity, passing over transgression for the remnant of his inheritance? He does not retain his anger forever. Of course he disciplines us, right? But he doesn't retain his anger forever because he delights in steadfast love. He will again have compassion on us. He will tread our iniquities underfoot. He will cast all our sins into the depths of the sea. Even though we are bent on sinning, he will not retain his anger because he delights in steadfast love." And then Zephaniah, see, I told you we were like Pilgrim's Gehen through the minor prophets. Zephaniah three seventeen, listen to this. "The Lord, your God, is in your midst." Remember, he's gonna come to us, but not in anger. "A mighty one who will say, 'He will rejoice over you with gladness. He will quiet you by his love.'" Okay, so that can, I like, I like, like different versions and looking up the the actual words in the Greek and the Hebrew and I'm just So he will quiet you by his love could mean, "Stop getting all antsy. I love you." Or it could mean, "I love you. I'm not bringing up your sins against you anymore. I'm not gonna make mention of your past sins. I'm not throwing them in your face." "He will exalt over you with loud sing, loud singing." Exalt, that's a great verb. You're not an English teacher, so I like verbs. Loud singing, he's not gonna hum over us. Although that would be lovely. Loud singing, why? Because he delights in us. So he's not going to make any, he's not gonna make mention of our past sins, so that, I'm back at three seventeen. Here I go again, here we are. "So that though the faint trees should not blossom, nor fruit beyond the vines, the produce of the olive fale and the fields yield no food, the flock be cut off from the fold, and there be no herds in the stalls. Yet, no matter how bad things are, I will rejoice in the Lord. I will take joy in the God of my salvation because..." Verse nineteen, "God, the Lord, is my strength. He makes my feet like the deer's. He makes me tread on my high places." Sure footed confidence. You know, have you ever watched deer in the mountain or mountain goats? It's like, I mean, I just stand there wide eyed thinking, "How come you all don't have broken legs?" Do they really stop and look where they're going? They just sort of leap. Sure footed confidence. So we'll be able to rejoice though times are bad because, Isaiah sixty-two, three and four. "You shall be a crown of wheat in the hand of the Lord." A royal diadem. Remember who are we? We are daughters of the King. "A royal diadem in the hand of your God, you shall no more be termed forsaken." And your land shall no more be desolate. But you shall be called, see, when that woman told me that God delighted in me, I was like, "No," but then, you know, my English teacher writing research paper, kept in, DNA kept in, and I'm like, "Wonder if that's in the Bible where God delights in me?" Oh, it's like, okay, so God delights in Daniel. Well, that's great. That's Daniel. Okay, oh, and God delighted in Moses. Well, that's Moses. What about little old me? I mean, "You shall no more be termed forsaken, but you shall be called my delight." That's me. That's me. The Lord delights in me and you, every single one of you, if you are his child. He delights in you. He doesn't tolerate you. He doesn't put up with you. He delights in you. So I'm done. Because of Christ's death on the cross and our acceptance of that sacrifice, we are now children first and sinners second. And that's enough to make us all happy.
David.
Children first. And this lovely man who writes this lovely book says, shut up. That's not what he says. Says, um, "No father hates his child who has cancer. That child has all the father's pity and cancer has all the father's hatred." We are children first and sinners second. I'm done. Thanks for listening. You can be in my class anytime.